I am Chris Recchia. I am going to be your chair this evening for the Randolph Development Review Board. We're Monday, June 17th, 2019, in Chambly Music Hall. I want to thank you all for coming. If you haven't signed in already, I ask if you do that because we'd like to know who's here. We're going to go through our agenda and what I do... Well, let me introduce everybody first, starting way down on my right.
Marty Rothstein, Chris, somebody in the room there?
Matt Morosky.
Paul Huggie.
John Hart.
Dan DeVoe.
Josh Ostarrez.
Bill McGraw.
So we're all here, and we are the Development Review Board. We apply the zoning regulations for the town of Randolph. We're going to go through the agenda, which has several items on it. And the first item, though, is the public to be heard about anything that's not on the agenda. So does anyone have anything they want to comment on that is not an item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to the first application. So Rudolph and Harold Lambert, correct, who is speaking to that? Thank you. So this is a little different setup than we're used to. We have microphones right here, the tape. This is... The hearing is being recorded for all of these applications, and it does become part of the record. I think where you are is fine. If anyone else wants to speak to this application or other applications, I'm going to ask that you somehow come up to a front seat or stand up here where we can see you and hear you. But yes, so could you introduce yourself, please, and raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
And would you state your name for the record, please?
Harold Lambert.
Thank you, Harold. So would you tell us about your application, please?
Okay, I'm in the process of trying to subdivide a large piece of acreage.
Yep, can I stop you there? I'm sorry. You didn't say anything wrong.
Oh.
Can everybody hear him from there? Okay, so I'm going to give you the microphone. I'm sure they're all here for the subdivision application anyway.
I'm subdividing a 72-acre piece of property that's been in the family for over 55 years. There's a 11- to 12-acre piece that's right along Route 14, right north of, if everybody knows, Gifford's property. And we've divided it into about 11 and a half acres. And there's a house on there, and there's a large barn. And that's the piece that's going to be subdivided off from the rest. The other 60 to 61 acres will be kept in the family for many, many years to just enjoy the Vermont property. My brother lives in Massachusetts, my brother Rudy. And I live in New Jersey. And the rest of the family is spread out throughout the entire country, where we do still come up here to meet to enjoy the property. But the main thing is subdividing the piece that you see probably in the maps you see right there. And it's just in the process of getting the final approval so that we can sell the property. We actually do have a buyer, and it's somebody that's right here in Randolph, that is going to be moving into the house, buying it, moving in, and continuing to use it as a property for their families. Anything else?
Yes, probably. Don't go away, because this is going to be... Do we have any other microphones, Marty, here? Because that would make things easier. Oh, there's one there, but...
Chris, there's a lot of room right there.
Yeah, that'll be used later, but maybe we could bring this up for people. Thank you. You can hand that to me. Thank you. That'll make it a little easier. So a question I have is about the back lot. Could you describe the access to the back lot? You said you have a cell, that you have a buyer for the... Is it for the house and the barn?
Yeah, the house, the barn, and all the road frontage. All the road frontage is going to stay with the piece that's subdivided.
Yes.
The original driveway will stay intact, which is left from the home that's been existing there for hundreds of years. And the right-of-way will go to the right of the property, which is basically the access point that was there again for hundreds of years that went up through... There's a logging road that went through the property that goes straight up through. The property on the right-hand side cuts over up into a ton bridge.
Okay, so there will be an access to the back lot.
Correct.
And...
There's a 50-foot right-of-way.
Yeah, and I see the 50-foot wide utility easement. Is that the same, the access easement?
Yeah, that's basically for the road. And if you have to have any power or anything, it'll go over there, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Do any of the board members have questions? Do any of the audience members have questions? Any of the... Is this a question or a comment? The reason I ask is I have to swear you in if it's a comment, but if it's a question, I don't need to swear you in. Go ahead, please. But if you could state your name, please, that would be helpful.
My name is Larry Rivit, R-E-V-I-T.
Thank you.
And I would like to ask what... I mean, maybe this is pretty true, and it's going to be answered, but what, if anything, is going to be meant to mitigate light pollution coming from the property?
Okay, we're on a subdivision application at the moment. This is not the hotel.
Oh. Well, you know, I blew it already.
There you go, there you go. But if Mr. Lambert wants to answer the question about the lighting, no. Okay. No, wait until we're on that application, if you'd like. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. That's great. Any other comments or questions on this application? Okay, seeing none. Board, what's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve the application.
Thank you, Dan, has moved to approve it. We have a second for Matt. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Come take the microphone with you. I have a decision, we're going to need it later. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to the next application, which is Gifford Medical Center. What I will say is, what I just did is what I intend to do throughout the evening, which is hear from the applicant, have the board ask questions, have the public ask questions, for which you do not need to be sworn in, and then go to comments from the public. If there are comments from the public, then I need to swear you in. And if you could be careful about distinguishing those two, that would be really helpful. So the next application is Gifford Medical Center. Request for a waiver of local Act 250 review pursuant to Section 805(c)(3) for the removal of 2 and 4 Maple Street. Properties are in the Randolph Village High Density District. So who is here to speak to that application?
Doug Foal.
Doug, would you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Thank you. So, Mr. Foal, would you tell us about what Gifford's proposing here?
Sure. We're just looking for local Act 250 waiver because the projects are actually demolition, there's no new construction, taking down 2 and 4 Maple Street, buildings that have facilities to the hospital to make green space. So strictly demolition, removal of foundation, and planting grass for green space.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question now. What were these buildings used for previously?
2 Maple Street was our former HR building, and now it's used for storage. The heat and water are all disconnected. Power is disconnected. 4 Maple Street, there is an office for auxiliary. They run the thrift store, and we have some on-call housing as well as some storage.
So being in the high-density district, obviously we have a need for housing and other businesses and things like that. Can I ask what the condition of buildings in that caused you to decide to demolish them as opposed to reuse them?
We run a medical facility, and the majority of our clinical space needs higher-end, more modern technology that we need to kind of work in. So the space is basically, it's a previous residential home, and it doesn't suit the needs of what business we do do there, so.
So green space does, though?
Green space is motivated for our staff.
Other questions from the board?
Not a question, but I want to point out for anyone in the audience wondering, we don't actually, as a board, have jurisdiction over a demolition project. So they're asking for Act 250 waiver. They have to get an Act 250 permit because the hospital is under an Act 250 jurisdiction. So we can wait now for review of the local part of the Act 250 review process if we don't have jurisdiction over the project to begin with. In this case, we don't have jurisdiction over the project to begin with. So that's what's happening.
Yeah, and to add to that, the local Act 250 review is really based on its impact on the services of the town, so things like fire, or schools, or things like that, which you might get from a development that added those things, but would be difficult to come by by those things that were demolition. So thank you, Matt. Any other questions or comments from the board? Board motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the local waiver of the Act 250 review. That's your question.
Thank you, Matt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, me. And the motion passes.
It's okay, though?
Yes, I did. I did. Thank you. Okay, thanks. We're going to move on now to... Get my agenda back. Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to move on to item number four, Farm Developing LLC. This is a site plan, conditional use, and local Act 250 review for a hotel, restaurant, and conference center facility on Route 66. The property is in the Interchange Southeast District. And again, we're going to go through the same process of hearing from the applicant, then having the board ask questions, and then open it up for questions from the public, and then comments from the public. I would ask that we have specific rules and regulations that we are intending to implement here. So if you do have a comment, when you get to that point, if you're able to cite a particular part of the regulation that you're concerned with, that would be very helpful. So for now, I will turn it over to the applicant. Can I ask, everyone who is going to be speaking to this application, could you raise your right hand, and let's see how many there are? Oh, good, there are a lot of you. All right. So do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Great. Would you all state your names, please? Starting here.
My name is Brian Lane-Carnes. I'm with DeWolf Engineering, the project's a volunteer.
Thank you, Brian.
Our name is Paul Ray. I'm the R in Farm.
Okay. And he's got several back here.
Stephen Roy with Wezenly, your architects.
Matt Foal with Lee's Management Company.
Ed Murphy for our applicant.
Anyone else that I missed? Okay, thank you. So go right ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. So as you said, the project that is proposed is an 89-unit hotel in one building and associated 152-seat restaurant and 400-seat conference center in Jason Building.
Can I speak up for him?
Yeah, that microphone, you're going to have to pull closer to you, please.
Better?
Yeah, but you're leaning over. I think that's going to fade with time. Can you lift the microphone up toward you? Thank you. Yeah, I think that'll be better for you.
No one's sure it's going to be able to testify.
Yeah. That's why I have my own down here.
So as you can see on the location map that I have on the screen here now, the project parcel is to the east of the Interstate 89 interchange. So it's marked with the tax project location, and it's centered in the open field that you can see on the map there. Just so everyone can get oriented, to the north of the project, this sort of large building you can see there is the former Vermont Pure facility. To the west of that is the parking lot. That development right there is the Morgan Orchard Senior Living Community. And that is the McDonald's and gas station on the other side of the highway. This sheet is an overview of the general site plan. This building here is the 80-unit hotel. There's a park or shed for drop-off in the front, and a one-story extension on the back here that'll have an indoor pool. This building over here is the restaurant and conference center. The restaurant is generally in the northern half of the building, and the conference center is generally in the southern part of the building. The access to the site is at the location more or less of an existing farm access up into the site. There'll be a limited amount of tree clearing between here and there along the frontage to provide visibility for the site through the road, and then also traffic safety for people entering and exiting the site. Parking areas are distributed around the site. So on all four sides of the hotel... Oh, sorry. On three sides of the hotel, there's parking. There's access around all four sides of the hotel, which is designed to be sufficient for fire access all the way around. And then there's this additional bay of parking to the north of the hotel, and a bay of parking behind the restaurant and conference center that's going to be intended for employee use. These parking spaces on the west side of the site... Excuse me. Are intended for larger vehicles. Say someone went to track in a snowmobile trailer. There's an adjacent vast trail, so we expect that there'll be some visitors to the hotel that are there for snowmobiling, and we've given them a place to park out of the way. In the southeast corner of the site here is going to be an open grass area that will be utilized for occasional events. They put a tent in that area to accommodate that. And there is a designated area of grassed overflow parking, if that. Tented events are also using the restaurant and conference center facilities. Up here in the northeast corner of the site is the stormwater treatment wetland. All of the drainage for the site will be captured in an underground drainage system, a system of catch basins and piping, and piped to the stormwater treatment wetland for both water quality and flood control. The Florida being discharged during existing culvert under Oak Ridge Lane here. That's the general overview of the project. I don't know if it's the pleasure of the board to jump into criteria or if you have a few questions first.
Yep, no, I think unless the board is anxious to ask questions, I'd prefer you continue on, go through the criteria where you are.
So the site is designed to meet the dimensional requirements of the Interchange Southeast District. The board members likely have the cover letter that I prepared. There's a table on the first page listing the dimensional requirements. So most of the requirements are met and known by the site, including building coverage and lot coverage. So the lot itself is almost 26 acres. So building coverage is just over 3% of the site. And lot coverage, so including all of the building and then all the impervious areas, just parking sidewalks and so forth, is just over 13% of the site. Setbacks can be seen on this plan, including the 170-foot setback for buildings and parking from the 71 over 66, all on this curved line here. We are requesting height waiver under Section 225(c)(3)(a), which we can talk about more specifically later. So continuing on down through the criteria, I'm going to follow the order of my letter here, so we'll start with conditional use review. The project should have no significant effects on community facilities. We've had all of our requisites, local Act 250 reviews, so the project's been approved with a few conditions from the Fire Services Advisory Committee. And we just issued wastewater allocation by the Select Board after the 214th meeting. Water supply will be from an onsite drilled well, and so the project will be permitted as a non-transit, non-community public water system. We don't expect the project to have any significant impact on schools. While there may be some positions where people coming from out of town, we expect the majority of the jobs that are generated by this project to be filled through the local kind of pool. The effect of the project on the character of the area, generally in the Interchange District, there's a whole set of additional regulations that are intended to establish and maintain the character of the area of the Interchange Drive Interstate 89. So the project has certainly been designed to meet all of the specific Interchange District regulations. There's also several areas of the town planned that the project complies with. Protection of geographic and natural features. So the main natural features of the site, there's a stream in a drainage ditch along the Route 66 right-of-way. So to the east of the project, it runs along the south side where the project is. It's conveyed in a culvert to the north side, and then comes back on the south side down to this area. So the project has essentially no effect on the stream. The closest disturbance to it is at the right-of-way, but that's adjacent to the head wall of the culvert where the stream is conveyed under the road. And the drainage from the roadway at that point is directed away from the stream, so it should really have no impact there. I would also note that the stream is in a really constructed riprap ditch to the north... Or sorry, to the east of the project here where we're making our closest impacts. Another natural feature of the site is a Class II wetland, which is delineated in this area to the east of the site. We'll be maintaining a 50-foot buffer at the minimum to the Class II wetlands, so, you know, our natural buffer, so not expected to have any impacts to the wetland. Almost the entire site except for the wetland area is mapped as primary agricultural soils. As part of the Act 250 review process, we are going to be negotiating a mitigation agreement with the Agency of Agriculture for impacts of primary agricultural soils. The project's generally going to cluster as much as possible in the center of the site to minimize the amount of impact. And we expect that that agreement will be a combination of onsite and offset mitigation. But in any case, we'll be following the ratios informed was that the Agency of Agriculture has developed for impacts of primary agricultural soils. I think we discussed municipal services. And then another policy of the town plan is encouraging a variety of land uses. So this project is going to have a positive impact on a lot of the local communal business, so it's going to add to the variety of land uses that are already developed in the Interchange area, and then also provide badly needed temporary housing to support many of the other local institutions, such as the hospital, BTC, local businesses that are trying to pull in applicants with jobs, you know, and even kids visiting the biologists like Norwich University. And the project's also designed to meet the purposes of the Interchange Land Use District, which are to encourage a limited mix of land uses primarily commercial in nature and provide employment for the region, protecting scenic views, open field, and woodlands visible from Route 66, traffic safety over Route 66, and access to I-89 and natural features. So I think we've talked about the mix of land uses. We can address the scenic views when we get into the Interchange Standards. We have a view shed study that I'll present to the board as well. And then we just discussed natural features as well. Traffic impacts are the next criteria under conditional use review. The information that's presented in the cover letter has been supplemented by traffic impact assessment that was prepared at the request of the Agency of Transportation. We applied for our letter of intent to get access to the state right-of-way. We're pressing for the traffic impact assessment. So Laimon Dickinson prepared traffic impact assessment, which I'll just sort of summarize for you. One of the reasons they asked us to prepare a traffic assessment was even though the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual includes restaurant use inside of hotel use, they asked us to estimate that the trips that would be generated by the restaurant separately from the trips that would be generated by the hotel and the conference center. So I think I referenced using the ITE manual in the letter, 59 trips in the PM peak hour. When you count the restaurants separately, that goes up to 111 trips in the PM peak hour. So that was the basis of traffic study that was prepared. So that's a higher estimate of traffic impacts. Even with that higher estimate of traffic impacts, there was no impact to level of service at the project drive, at the Interstate 89 interchange, or at the Route 66 intersection up at the top of the hill by Randolph Center. Both in the... You know, so comparing not building the hotel to building the hotel, they compared it in 2020, which is the year we're looking at the hotel opening, and then they did a five-year projection. So both the year the hotel opens and five years later, they're expecting no impact on levels of service at any of the studied intersections. They also examined traffic safety, including site distances from the driveway. So they had taken a look at that. They took another look at it. They are recommending removing more of the trees to the east of the project uphill to just improve the uphill site distances. But other than that, some of the project didn't have an impact on traffic safety. Next criteria under conditional use is no undue effect on biohospitals and ordinances, which will be addressed. Generally, as we go through and address the other criteria. Effecting utilization of renewable energy resources. The project, again, is centered in the parcel, so it's not particularly near any other properties that may utilize renewable resources. And to the north of the property, where you typically have a southern exposure to the sun for solar, there's nothing between us and the road, so we don't anticipate any reduction in access to renewable energy. And then not generating excessive dust noise, glare, vibration, radiation, or other noises. We don't expect that this is going to have any particularly undue effects under any of those. The hotel is... Generally, everything happens inside. Even the restaurant, most of the things happen inside. And the biggest kitchen is to the northeast end of the restaurant is the kitchen area, so it's located as far away from the decent restaurant residences as possible. So does the board have any questions on the conditional use criteria?
Excuse me, could you move the mic down now a little bit because it's too high?
Too loud?
It's too high. We're not hearing you.
Yeah, as you read, you are heading down.
It's better to come up from below a little bit.
Great. Any questions from the board on the site plan? Uh, conditional use, sorry. Let's go on to site plan then.
Okay. So there's a few things in that beginning of site plan that I think I already addressed in conditional use, including compliance with regulations and natural features. So we'll move on to access. As I stated before, access to the project will come from a new curb cut off of Route sixty-six. We are proposing a second curb cut on the site for two reasons. One is the site distances at this location are the best of anywhere along the fringe. So for a safety reason. And the other reason we're not proposing to use the existing access off the site is to minimize impacts to neighbors. So yeah, this property does have rights to use oak ridge lane, but we didn't want to go that direction. We wanted to reserve oak ridge lane for access to the residential properties. And again, the site distances from down there are significantly worse than they are at the proposed access. So as I, as I stated before, the site distances are generally adequate from the proposed location. It's at the minimum of the intersection site distance to the east. So we're hoping to trim a few of the trees back there. We do need to just clear that with the state wetlands divisions because the buffer for the wetland goes on toward sixty-six to the east of the project. So anything we did over there, we just need to make sure, obtain an online permit if we needed it, or at least run it by the state wetland folks. The curb cut's designed to meet B-Trans commercial access standards, including both horizontal and vertical dimensional standards. We have received our letter of intent from B-Trans. So they've had to choose to review the design of the driveway and find it acceptable. On-site circulation. On-site circulation is provided by a series of drives and parking aisles. So the main circulation is to the driveway. Then there's a sort of a median circulation now between the parking lot and hotel. As I stated previously, the drive around the hotel is, this furthest out drive here is actually designed for access by tractor trailer. So it should be plenty of sufficient access for emergency vehicles and fire trucks. All of the access aisles are twenty-four feet in width and designed for two-way circulation. There's also access to three sides of the restaurant in the event of roof-to-services needed to access that area. The parking lot behind the restaurant is also designed for access for a thirty-foot box truck, which is what we expect will be the majority of deliveries to the restaurant. So they can pull up to the dumpster location here and then back down into this loading space for deliveries to the restaurant, drive out forward. There are no existing pedestrian facilities on Route sixty-six, as well as no commercial developments or adjacent parcels on the south side of the road. So we are not proposing any pedestrian or vehicular interconnection with adjacent properties. Parking, loading and service areas. Again, the parking areas are three sides of the hotel and behind the restaurant. All the parking spaces are designed, the regulations, nine-foot by eighteen-foot spaces and twenty-four-foot aisles. The entire parking area is proposed to be paved and it will be graded to drain stormwater, as I stated before, it's really underground collection system. We are proposing a reduction to the required number of parking spaces based on shared uses between the three, three facilities on the site. So I had submitted with the application of shared use parking and access, which is based on a reduction in parking based on peak usage over the time of day. So if, you know, during the day, you would expect, you know, a certain amount of time versus a certain amount of utilization of the parking based on use versus in the evening or the weekend. So the way the analysis works is you apply these percentages, which we took from the city of Montpelier zoning regulations, and then apply the percentages to different time periods. And then whenever is the peak parking demand time period is the amount of parking that we propose to. So based on that analysis, the string calculation of parking spaces from the zoning regulations is two hundred and ninety-four spaces. We're proposing two hundred and thirty-eight spaces, which is a twenty percent reduction in spaces based on the shared use parking analysis. And also just to minimize site disturbance, minimize the amount of parking spaces that people have to look at when they enter the site, minimize impacts to natural resources. There's a number of reasons why we're requesting a parking reduction. The next site plan criteria is landscaping. This is the project landscaping plan. The landscaping is designed for the requirements of the interchange district to integrate the site into the agrarian, mixed agrarian character of the general area. So there's a minimal amount of grassed lawn. This sort of squiggly line here around the edge is intended to show the edge of meadow areas. There are some split row fencing along and crabapple trees along the entrance to sort of drag people into the site. There are some larger trees proposed around the border of the site to separate the site from the surrounding area. And then the remainder of the trees are there to break up the parking area, provide shade trees. So there's, let's see, there's some significant shade trees in the parking area, especially in this fifteen-foot quiet landscaped area between the two parking areas to the north of the hotel, as well as in some of these areas here. And then we're also providing landscaping on the east side of the site. One of the comments we did get from the city advisory committee was that this wall of the restaurant is a large wall with not a lot of door and window openings. They requested some additional screening because there's a view of the back of the restaurant as you're coming down Route sixty-six from the east. So there's these three large maple trees that are intended to sort of break up the back of that facade, as well as a couple of spruce trees a little farther away that will work in concert with the existing wooded areas remain to the north and provide additional screening. That those landscaping has been added to the view study so we can take a closer look at what that's going to look like. Can we get into that section?
So just to clarify, that is not in our packet of applications on the landscaping?
Right, so the addition, the addition of landscaping is just red, yellow and red maple here along the back of the restaurant.
Gotcha.
Are you in the training for that spread studio?
Yeah, actually, as long as we're on landscaping, can I ask, oh, because, by the way, we did a site visit. Some of you may have joined us out there. Nothing that we said or did on the site visit counts? Thank you. Hello. So we had conducted a site visit earlier at five-thirty tonight at the site. Nothing we said or did there counts as part of the record unless and until it's repeated here or addressed here. So I just, for those of you who are there, if you had thoughts and shared them, you need to share them again as part of this. But one of the questions I had, well, out there, there are two beautiful cherry trees off the back toward the area. And I got mixed review as to whether those were staying or going. Could you explain that?
Behind the tent area?
Yeah, behind the tent area.
So those are... So I think these are, these are the trees in question here. So there's five of them that are proposed to be removed along the back here. And they do include some of the larger existing trees that are there.
Okay.
Within the area that's going to be graded to, to create the tent and event site. So they wouldn't survive the grading, so we're proposing to remove them. Thank you. The next criteria is grading and drainage. So in general, the site is graded to follow the existing slope of the site from the southeast over here to the northwest over there. There will be some flattening of the site in order to accommodate the building pad, but we're generally maintaining the existing drainage pattern. As I said, all the parking lot drainage is collected in closed piping and can be through the stormwater pond or will contribute to the requirements of the Vermont Stormwater Management Manual. Outdoor storage and outdoor facilities. We're not proposing any outdoor storage or display of goods, supplies, vehicles, equipment, machinery or other materials other than things that are typically associated with commercial developments, like dumpsters, HVAC equipment, parking areas, site lighting, that kind of stuff. The dumpsters are, there's two of them. One of them is located here at the south end of the drive between the hotel and the restaurant, which is generally going to be for the hotel use. And then one is located in the northeast corner of the site here, which is generally going to be for the restaurant use. In both of those dumpsters will be provided with screening fences, as well as exterior equipment and things like that. The next criteria is site lighting. So this is our project photo map plan. Generally, the site lighting is designed to provide safety and security for the site without overly lighting things. So the site lighting's been designed to comply with the Vermont outdoor lighting requirements and IES NA recommendations, including average and minimum light levels and max, average min and min max ratios. In general, the parking lot light areas are lighted to between one and one and a half foot candles on average. I don't know how easy it is to see, but this gentle line here is a one-foot candle is a contour. So you can see, you know, in, in the areas directly below the lights, it's a little higher. But in general, the parking lot is between one and two foot candles. The area of the port crochet is going to be lit a little more brightly in the neighborhood of five foot candles. And they will be, you know, lighting at the door entrances and those kinds of areas. There is a flag pole located right here that we were planning to light the flag on the flag pole, but it's going to go on the top and shine down onto the flag. Got it looking, that's from the bottom.
Frank, can you talk about how the lighting will look from off-site? What sort of lighting you're...
Oh, sure. All the lighting fixtures are fully cut off and downcast. Generally, they're LED lights. So there should be no glare impact off-site. There was a little bit of concern at the DRC meeting about these two lights and the impact on the residence that's downhill from there. So we'll be providing house side shields on the lights on that end there. But otherwise, you know, from off-site, on the areas where you can see the site, you will see that the parking lot is lit, but you shouldn't have any direct views of lighting fixtures. There shouldn't be any glare. The lighting levels and the luminaires that are selected should prevent any significant sky glow from, from development. So because the development has limited visibility from off-site, also the lighting will have limited visibility from off-site. So it shouldn't be an adverse impact on the surrounding area.
Can you also, as long as we're on questions, I guess, on this? What's the difference between like nighttime business hours and nighttime overnight for you guys for lighting?
I don't think you're, you're asking if we're going to reduce the lighting after like late in the night?
Yeah, thank you for rephrasing that question.
Sure. I just wanted you to understand the question. We haven't made a specific proposal to reduce the lighting, lighting after hours. Because it's a hotel, people are going to be accessing it at all hours at night. You know, and again, because of the limited visibility from off-site, you know, it may, or may not be appropriate to have additional dimming after hours.
Okay, thank you.
So that is the end of the site plan criteria. Next on my list is the specific, district specific standards for the interchange district. Starting with the dimensional standards specific to the interchange district. Generally, the project's designed to meet the dimensional standards of the interchange district as indicated in the table up in front of the letter. As I stated at the beginning, we are requesting a waiver to the height limit in the district. So the general height limit in the interchange southeast district is thirty-five feet. We're requesting a waiver for building height of forty-nine feet six inches, which is below the maximum height allowable with a waiver for of fifty feet. And so there's a few criteria to go along with the requesting of the height waiver. One is the scenic sensitivity requirement. And so as part of addressing the scenic sensitivity requirement, we had, we managed to prepare this view study. The methodology of the view study was similarly to anyone who was at the site visit. Floated, excuse me, a balloon above the entrance to the hotel. In this case, we actually had one balloon at fifty feet, which is just above the proposed height of the hotel. One at seventy-five feet and one at a hundred feet just to illustrate the visibility unit higher heights than we're proposing. So this is a general map of where they took photographs of when the balloons were floated. And of, of all of these locations, the only place, places where they are visible were off of Route sixty-six to the east of the project and from the Morgan Orchard's development. So generally, the project complies very well with the visibility standards. It's not visible at all from interstate eighty-nine and has only limited visibility from Route sixty-six. So this is the view from the Morgan Orchard's parking lot. You can see in this law, this yellow balloon is the fifty-foot height. The blue balloon is the seventy-five-foot height. The red balloon is the hundred-foot height. So based on the location used in the picture, this is a rendering of the development as it would appear from the Morgan Orchard's. You can see that the, at fifty feet, which is this, this portion of the roof point of the hotel, the hotel's below the existing tree line. So it won't, from this vantage point, block any view that isn't of the spot where the hotel is. So you can see it, but you can also, it doesn't block any view of anything beyond it. And you can get a sense, you know, from this view, all of the light poles are lower than the ridgeline of this building. So even from the places where the site is visible, I'm sure you will see that the parking lot is lit, but you won't really see any of the light fixtures.
I'm sorry, as long as we're on that, back again, you do have lighting behind the restaurant, right? On your lighting thing?
Oh, that's true. Yes, you're right. There's light behind the restaurant.
Okay, so that would be clearly...
We also added more trees.
Sorry, hang on, Paul, because I didn't swear you, oh, I did swear you in, that's right. That was Paul, right? Sorry. What, did you want to say that?
Uh, we did add trees into the back of that building.
Right, okay, so that'll, okay, thank you.
And, and again, you know, this view is going to be from above lighting fixtures as well. So because they're downcast, you know, again, when you can see the, when you can see the development, you can see that there are lights there, but you're not going to see any of the actual LEDs themselves. This is the same view from Route sixty-six to the north of the project. Sorry, east of the project uphill. This is the class-two wetland. And here are the same three balloons. And so, and these pictures were taken in April, I think, before, obviously, before leaf-out. So, you know, you can see today at the site just that there's significantly more foliage in the summertime. But this is the, the view from Route sixty-six from this fairly limited vantage point as you're driving by the wetland. And then you can see right here, these right here are the three spruce trees that are proposed to screen and break up... to screen and break up the view that the draft was concerned about. And then also behind them, you can see here, there, and you can almost see it there, the three large maple trees that will be behind there. So, you know, we feel that that provides an adequate amount of breaking up of the view and screening of the view of the back of the hotel. And again, this is giving the time here, right, so most visible, these pictures were taken in the summertime, you'll see less of it. And again, even from this vantage point, you can see the hotel, even though you're a lot lower, the hotel is pretty much at the elevation of the existing tree line back here. And you still maintain the views to the mountains in the distance. And these are the other views from various points where the hotel is not visible. So this is I-89 near the exit ramp looking back up towards the hotel. This is the view from the park and ride. And you can see that there's a significant amount of conifers in this area that effectively screen the project from view. This is the southbound lane of Interstate 89. And this is to the south of the interchange, looking north towards the project. And then this is a little bit higher up Route 66. And this illustrates that, you know, you don't even see the view of the project from Route 66 until you've passed the drive. So this is from the driveway to the Morgan Orchard's, to the east of that. So the view of the site that you do have from Route 66 doesn't start until after you pass the Morgan Orchard's driveway.
And just for clarification, in all these renderings, you have put the hotel and conference center, restaurant in the drawing?
So these ones, these ones are ones where the picture was taken to illustrate the fact that you couldn't see the balloons.
Okay, fine.
So without the balloons, we can't put the drawing in the rendering, but so...
But where the balloons were showing, you have shown, that's the rendering there?
From the two areas where the balloons are visible, that's where we've put the renderings, the building in. So that is one portion of the waiver criteria. Another portion of the waiver criteria is that...
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, we have to go back to the slide we discussed on the park and ride area. Park and ride?
Yep. So those trees right there will be maintained. Are those owned by...
So some of them are on our property, on the applicant's property. And the ones that aren't on the applicant's property are in the Interstate 89 right of way. So there's minimal chance that AOT will go through and cut them down.
We own about five acres on the west side of that little log town that we saw, and that's those trees there.
This might be illustrative. So this is, here's the park and ride. This is the applicant's property. So you can see that the bulk of those conifers are on the applicant's property. And then there is some amount of them that are in the Interstate 89 right of way. But I mean, unless, unless these are in pinching of function on the highway, I can't imagine AOT can move through and cut them down. But even if they did, there'd still be a significant buffer on the property. So the other section of, or one of the other sections of the height waiver is that the building height is necessary to accommodate a specific process that can't otherwise be accommodated in a building designed to meet the 35-foot height standard. So I addressed that a bit in the layer, but I'd like to kind of go through that point by point. This project, the project that is proposed is Hampton Inn. So it's a national brand hotel. It's not an independent hotel. And with being a national brand hotel, there are requirements in order to get the franchise that has to be met. If you don't meet the brand requirements in your building and hotel, then you don't get a franchise agreement, and therefore you can't build the project that we're proposing. One of the requirements in order to get the franchise agreement is that the applicant come back to market study to determine the number of rooms that should be in the hotel. And the results of the market study that was done for this hotel showed that an 80-unit hotel was what was not feasible. We're proposing 79 units, just for some building. It was awkward to add the 80th unit into the layout of the building, so we cut from 79. So because the, as part of the franchise agreement, the applicants have agreed to build a 79-unit hotel. If they don't build a 79-unit hotel, then the project doesn't go forward. So the number of units in the hotel is a specific requirement of this specific project. And the project would not go forward if that number of units wasn't met. So that's, the majority of the reason why we're requesting the height waiver is to accommodate a 79-unit hotel. We looked at a three-story hotel because we could fit it within the 50-foot, you know, additional height with the waiver. And a two-story hotel, if it had the proposed roof line, and I'll just switch to that. So this is an elevation of the hotel building. There's a variation in the roof line. So this is the point in the roof line at which it's 49 and a half feet. It's around 10 feet lower down at the ends. So this variation in roof line was designed into the project to meet the building design standards of the district. So even if you were to build a two-story hotel with a very roof line that meets the design standards of the district, it would still require a height waiver. And it would take up quite a lot more space because about two-thirds of the first floor isn't hotel units. So in order to change from three stories to two, you're adding more, you're adding a lot more room on the end than just a third more of the building because of the larger area on the first floor that's dedicated to lobby and breakfast area and things like that.
So you said the two-story version. Do you know the numbers that that would change for the percent coverage and building coverage?
I don't, because we haven't done a full design in two stories.
We're asking for a three-story with...
No, I understand. I always, I know. We are charged with, one of the issues is clearly a height waiver, right? So then the question is, what are the alternatives if they're, and we're trying to, I need, we need the information on the record.
So even a two-story building with a complying roof line would be over 35 feet.
Okay.
So the option for creating a hotel with 79 units with a complying roof line is a one-story building, and that's just too large to be feasible on the site. It takes up too much area and it's really infestable. And I don't think that the brand would approve a one-story hotel anyway. It's doubtful that they would approve a two-story hotel. So the specific requirement of this project is that, to build this project that we're proposing, it has to be a 79 or 80-unit hotel. And it's not feasible to build a 79 or 80-unit hotel that has a roof line that complies with the architectural standards of the district and has the required number of rooms.
So that's your, what you're saying for the requirement in the regulations, the specific process?
That's right.
Okay. But there's nothing else, no elevator HVAC system? That would be a specific process that would require the 50-foot height?
Well, I mean, as you make the building smaller, you reduce the requirements for an elevator. You know, in a three-story building, you need an elevator. In a two-story building, you may not need an elevator, but no, there's not, you know, any. This is the reason why it has to be a three-story building.
So, so everyone knows, the requirement is that one of, 3A2 of the section is that the additional building height is necessary to accommodate a specific process that cannot otherwise be accommodated in a building designed in accordance with the maximum height standards. Process is not defined, it's one of the things we have to consider, what is meant by a specific process. And we will, we will address that. And that's what Dan was getting at, so go ahead. Is it okay to, Paul?
Yeah.
I do want to mention to everybody that we did do a preliminary meeting with the DRB.
Yes.
And we showed different roof lines. We showed a four-story building with a flat roof.
Right.
We also showed a building with a peaked roof.
Yep.
And that's what we're providing. So we took our call from what the consensus was of the board, so we wanted to put a peak on it so that it would fit within the character Randolph Center and a flat roof.
I think all of that is relevant information. It's important for people to know, and that's what I was trying to get at.
I think we have pictures that show...
I think we should, I think we should, if you have them, you should show them so that people understand. That's part of the decision-making that's going on here.
The renderings that were from the preliminary hearing?
Paul is raising those as relevant. If you have them and you want to raise them, you can, yeah.
And then what our building looks like now.
Right.
I think you'll find it's a little more attractive.
This will just take a second.
Any questions from the board? This concludes, Brian, your description, or did you have...
No, we have Morgan Orchard's check, yes.
Okay, why don't you quickly go through those? I do want to get to public soon, so. But go ahead, and why don't you do those and pull up those maps at the same time, so I can see how you, how you can do left hand, right hand? I'm teasing. If you would, if you would, I mean, you can show those profiles at any point.
Sure. I can do two things at once.
Okay, yeah. I'm teasing. You can do one at a time. I didn't know which one you wanted to do first.
I've got this up, so let's do...
Okay, we'll do that first, yep.
Excuse me. So this is the brand standard design for Hampton Inn in 2019. And this is the original proposal that we presented to the DRB at the preliminary hearing. So the standard design for Hampton Inn is a four-story hotel. As you can see, it's far more modern and has a flat roof. And has a very specific color scheme. So this, all of this that you see in this picture here would be part of what the standard Hampton Inn design would be. So it's nail panels on the outside in gray and white. It's got the recessed windows, it's got the vertical blue elements, as well as the blue elements on either side in Hampton Inn. So when we presented this at the preliminary DRB hearing, the feedback both from the DRB and from the members of the public that were attending was that the strong preference was to have a building design that fit much more into the accurate architecture of Vermont, as well as matching much better with the other existing development in the area. So this was the starting point for the discussion. And I will also put up quickly the renderings of what we're proposing.
Anyone here from Texas that can check the info signal first?
It's all on the hard disk, believe it or not.
Yeah, okay.
There. So that's the current proposal. And all of the things that you're looking at in the current proposal were things that we had to go to the national brand and get specifically approved for this project because it is, you know, a variation from their standard design. So the roof line, the materials, so we'll get into this when we do the design standards, but the material along the bottom here is going to be a stone veneer. And then there's going to be two levels of a composite wood product, which will look like vertical siding to sort of break up the height of the building. The variation of roof lines, and we have a stone intersection. So all of that were design changes that, coming out of the original meeting, we were specifically requesting in order to help the project fit into the more better, really, and fit into Randolph better. So that's the sort of journey we were on before we had the R.
We really tried to listen to the concerns until we heard of the preliminary meeting.
Yep.
And that's how we got to this product.
Very good, thank you. You want to finish the criteria, then we'll move on to questions from the board?
Yes. There are some supplemental use standards, but hotel and conference facilities is allowed use in the interchange southeast district. And restaurant is allowed as an accessory use to the hotel. No drive-through or steering walkout, none of those are proposed. Then there's a list of supplemental site plan standards for the district. Hazard materials, no hazardous materials other than your standard cleaning fluids and such that you might use in a hotel or a restaurant. The open space criteria. While the project is proposed to be built in an open field in the center of the site, the open space criteria specifically protect open fields that are visible from Route 66. And so you can see, because of the existing tree line along here, and for those of you that are at the site visit, the site does not appear to be an open field from Route 66. The fields don't open up until you get up in this area to the northeast of the site, where the field starts to open up into the Morgan Orchard's area. And again, the proposed development is located towards the center of the property. So we're trying to preserve connections to the open space, those to the west, the trees that are helping block the visibility of the hotel, and to the open space to the east as well. Scenic sensitivity, we covered visibility of the site from the various protective implements on Route 66 and Interstate 89. I think we've covered topography and grading. Clustering is the next.
Topography and grading?
Yeah.
Do you agree with the elevation, the velocity level to face the hotel or heater?
1,291 feet at the hotel. So again, the project is designed to be clustered as much as possible while still providing the adequate space for the building and required parking at the center of the property. It's designed, the buildings are designed to relate to each other, both in the architectural design and in the layout of the site. So that's why we're proposing this kind of L shape here. You know, we expect most of the pedestrian traffic between the two sites to be centered on this portion of the site. So you see there's several crosswalks, pedestrian walkways. There's also these sort of formal landscaped area here to the south of the restaurant. That's sort of part of the pedestrian connections between the two buildings. I think we reviewed landscaping as well as access and circulation. The parking. So one of the parking criteria of the particular district is to try and avoid large expanses of parking. So in order to try and meet that, we've both separated the parking area around the sides as much as possible so that 57% of total parking is to the north of the hotel in this centered area. And then 43% is in these sort of auxiliary lots to the west and behind the hotel and behind the restaurant area. We've also provided this large landscape island in the main parking area to divide the two large sections of parking and, you know, to try and separate the sort of pedestrian-oriented area of the site down here from the more parking area-oriented area of the site. So as we discussed, this will be a minimum of 15 feet wide and have large shade trees and quite a bit of formal landscaping in it to break up that parking area. After lighting, we discussed, all proposed project utilities will be underground, which brings us to the building design standards, which I'm going to hand over to Steve from William Landfire to discuss.
Thank you. My name is Steve Roy of William Landfire Architects.
My name is Steve Roy of William Landfire Architects. We are, the architects working on the project. As Paul mentioned, and Brian, we started with a prototype hotel. We've customized it to fit the standards and fit the desires of the preliminary hearing that we were hearing. Looking at the building, its primary design is to use materials that are of the area. So there's stone and kind of residential grade siding products, asphalt shingle roofing, things that, things that are compatible with the area that look and feel familiar to folks in the area. The massing is meant to be compatible between the two uses. So with the hotel as the main view here, what we've done is to break up the roof mass in several locations. So as the building gets a little bit wider towards the entrance, we've raised the roof profile slightly. Adds visual interest. The peak of the hotel at the front kind of signifies that it's a main point of entrance. And it has some, you know, special, the stone veneer has some special attention to it. The colors that we've chosen are meant to be earth tone colors, ones that help to blend the project into the natural scenery. That will help both to reduce the visibility from any access points, but just to also feel like it's of the area. We have several views that I'll flip through just to take different vantage points throughout. This one is looking from the north side of the hotel towards the entrance. We do have some landscaping that'll happen in the parking island, which is, that's what that is showing. Looping around to the port cochere from the west side of the hotel is if you had driven through the parking lot. This would be a visitor's perspective as they drive up to the port cochere. As you can see, the, it is not dominant in height. It is really kind of a residential scale building. You can see in the background, the conference center, which is this area here. There's an entrance portion to that building, and then the restaurant is the gabled section. So we've tried to put a gable on the restaurant as well as the hotel. Those are kind of the signifying and unifying elements between the two buildings. One of the criteria for the area. This would be a view from a porch seating area for the restaurant. So if you're having a meal, you could be, you know, outdoors on a night like tonight. In the distance, you may have a little bit of a mountain view from that level. I think that might be the last of those views. I think really the effort has been to make it feel residential, reasonably scaled with adjacent buildings and other buildings in the area. Is there any criteria that I can follow? Any questions about the exterior?
Not that I have. Anyone have questions about the exterior? Thank you, good. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Brian, you back up?
I think, I'm not sure that we've shown a good view of the restaurant design, but just sort of you can see if there's a bird's eye view of the restaurant design. It's got a similar stone veneer on the end where you'll enter into the site, and then a similar wood siding, a composite wood siding project on the area of the hotel. So, as Steve was saying, some gables in this area, in this area. So between the materials, the massing, and the gables, that's how we're drawing the two buildings on the site together.
So, just to clarify, the restaurants on the left side, as we look at it, the conference center is on the right side?
That's right, yep. So this mass is the restaurant. This is the sort of entry and lobby here. And that mass is the conference center.
Okay, thank you. Paul, did you want to say something?
We had one more view of Route 66 looking...
Yeah, I did.
That I think will give people a good perspective on Route 66.
There, yep. There's a rendering of what the site will look like from the entrance on Route 66.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Brian?
I think that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all for your patience out there. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I want to ask about the lighting again. Comes up a lot. We have an example further up the hill of lighting. It's really visible to people passing by because you're looking up at the lighting. And you've rightly pointed out, Brian, that almost every vantage point, you're looking down. So, you'll know the parking lot somewhat a little bit in, but you're not going to see the glare of the light. That makes good sense to me. I'm wondering from this particular vantage point, what might you see and what have you done to mitigate it, if anything? Means to be mitigated.
So there are a couple of lights along the parking lane. But then, once you get up into the main, I'm sorry, the entrance drive. But once you get up into the main portion of the parking lot, all the fixtures are facing the side and they're, you know, going over there from the start. So, you know, you may, you may look up and you may see these two lights on the entrance drive, but that's no different than driving down the street and going under a streetlight or some such like that. So, nothing's going to be pointed out at Route 66. It's all, you know, just optics of the, of the things around the outside that are going to be throwing light into the site, and then everything's going to downcast. So, I don't expect it to be a significant glare issue. And as you're going down Route 66, you'd have to be looking this way out your window to really see them. Our view isn't the best, really, when you're driving that section up Route 66.
Probably should be looking forward, yeah.
I reckon you do.
Kind of as long as we're on lighting, I'm sorry. And we talked about whether there was a difference between business hours or late night in terms of change of the lighting. But can you describe, and this gets into traffic, but I want to address it in terms of lighting. The back of the hotel, and is that the loading area for the back, in the back of the area of the hotel? And what's, when do deliveries and things like that occur relative to the kind of standard business operating hours?
So, the loading area for the hotel, the breakfast area and kitchen are in this portion of the hotel. So the loading is going to occur along this drive by up right here. So, and I'm not sure what time the deliveries happen. I don't know if that's something that's been worked out yet, but, you know, sort of...
I was looking at the traffic. I was looking at the traffic. I'm sorry.
I am, I'm sorry, I'm hearing you.
Yeah, we're all interrupting. Go ahead. Why don't we let...
I just said, deliveries for the breakfast area happen after the breakfast times.
Okay.
So, kind of plot.
Yep. So, is it fair to say that that's coincident with the other kind of general day traffic that might be coming and going from the business? I'm trying to get a sense of like, whether, and I saw the traffic study, you know, the analysis of the number of vehicles and things like that. So, I understand that. What I don't understand necessarily is the coincidental timing and how traffic circulates through, through the site, and whether there's any interference between deliveries of the, you know, 55-foot tractor trailer trucks or the box trucks, and people going to the conference center, or people using the restaurant.
So generally, those deliveries happening in the late morning to middle of the day are at a very slow time for the hotel, for sure. People tend to leave the hotel in the morning and show up at the hotel in the evening. And so the middle of the day, it's, the hotel demands are very low. So we wouldn't expect there to be great amount of traffic at all accessing the drive around the back of the hotel at those hours. The deliveries to the restaurant are all going to be behind it in the employee parking area. And they're not going to be receiving deliveries in the middle of the dinnertime rush. They might, they might give a delivery during the day during a conference, but the conference attendees are going to be parking out in the northerly parking lot and accessing the buildings in the front. So, any deliveries that come into the restaurant will come in turn and be back up behind the restaurant. And the only conflict will be between any employees that might be at the restaurant who aren't likely to be leaving when they receive a delivery and the delivery trucks.
And kind of continuing on the lighting concept here. We do have some residences in the area. This is not a residential district, but you're adjacent to a residential district. So, the criteria for lighting is whenever practicable, or if lighting's in a sensitive or residential neighborhood, to have lighting that includes timers, dimmers, sensors, et cetera, to eliminate unneeded lighting. And so, with respect to the residences that you know are adjacent, both on the west side and the south side particularly, can you describe how the lighting would affect those residences?
Sure. So to the residents to the south, there's a significant different distance from the back of the parking lot to their house, and also a significant increase in elevation between the hotel level and the house. So, from the back of the parking area into the residence to the south is 356 feet, and it includes 150 feet of wooded area in between the two houses, as well as the ground level at the house to the south is approximately 40 feet higher than the ground level of the hotel. So I wouldn't expect any significant impact from lighting to someone who's above and that far away. So for the residents on the west, they are below the lighting. So we are going to be installing house side shields on those sides. And I think, you know, out in that area, those would certainly be candidates to be dimmed or, you know, put on motion sensors at night. I would imagine that the app would probably be willing to put most of the sort of outer lighting, at least on dimmers at night, if not for the infrared sensors. The ones closer to the hotel are probably going to need to stay on for security purposes.
Very good. Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm going to keep asking questions until somebody takes this other microphone and interrupts me. Is that okay? So now, I'm going to switch to the traffic circulation a little bit.
Can I just finish up on the lighting?
Oh, yeah, sure.
We did go in front of the DRAK committee, and they were comfortable with our lighting.
Yeah, we saw that.
So we had them in front of our...
Yep, we saw that.
We had them in front of a town board. They gave you a recommendation.
Okay, relax a little bit. We are, lighting, lighting is under our conditional use standards. It's under our site plan review criteria, and the DRAK is advisory to us. So, thank you, though. I understand. So, circulation from the, looking at the areas that you have for trailers and buses. So, are those standard, standard size and location for being able to back out? I'm saying this as someone who needs about 16 tries to back up a trailer on my truck. So, don't go by me. But coming into these, obviously, they have to back out into this to get, to get out again.
Right. So they're designed for a pickup truck with a trailer.
Yeah.
That's what they're designed for. Because what, the people we expect to be using them are people who want to bring their snowmobiles, stay at the hotel, snowmobile around the bus trails. So they, we did run a turning movement analysis, and they're adequate for someone with like a tundra, a full-size pickup truck. And I think it was like a 20-foot trailer can get back out of those spaces.
Great.
You know, and so that's why, you can see that the aisle width is increased from this to there.
Yes.
It should be adequate for those. We're not planning to have a semi parked there overnight. You don't expect actually that people that are driving semis are going to, they're going to go to the parking lot and sleep in their truck, so.
So if, would a bus be typically supported by the same lane, lane shape?
I haven't done a specific analysis for a bus.
It strikes me that they probably would.
You know, at worst, they may need some management from the hotel staff to shuffle people around, but...
And just, you know, just to be clear, if it were me, I would have to go forward and drive over the grass and back up to a different room. Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, we consider that as a circulation. But we, I've been in the industry for years, so we're just on the back of the previous and, you know, all of that.
Yeah, glad you did. Questions? Other questions from folks? No? Okay, I think we'll go to questions from the, from the public. When you, when you stand, would you please state your name? And we have a microphone here. I would really ask you to use it, both so that we can record you, but also so that everybody else can hear, so. Christopher Dear.
Gary, you're newly appointed to the Board of the Regional Planning Commission. What is the nature of your interaction with the Planning Commission? And when you refer to this district standards, are you talking about the T-ROCK standards?
Yeah, okay. So I think you're welcome to answer this if you wish. I'm going to be pretty lenient on the, on the questions unless we really are up against time. But we're really trying to focus on the standards that are applicable through our zoning regulations. So, what happens at the Regional Planning Commission, not so, not so relevant, with the exception of our town plan, which had been approved by them. But you're welcome to go forward, though.
So it's our standards that they're considering?
Yes, it's our standards only that we're considering here. Thank you, Gary. Next question? And again, we're on questions at the moment. If you do want to make a comment, I'm happy to, I'm happy to swear you in, but I'd like to, I'd like to get all the questions out first so everybody can hear the answers.
Hi, my name's Cynthia Kui Lechi. And this is sort of a waterfall question in the sense that they're asking for a height waiver based on demands, market demands, based on the market survey that they had done, saying that 80 rooms would be, was, you know, the amount that would be absorbed easily. Was that before or after the other proposed Hampton Inn of Montpelier, which has not opened yet? That's another 84 rooms. That's 20 minutes away.
It's actually 35, 40 minutes.
I don't know how fast you, I mean, it's 20, 25 minutes.
I don't know the answer to that. And you, you kind of were looking at me, but I can't answer that question.
Well, just as you're chairing the meeting, so...
Yes, I am chairing the meeting. So can the applicant answer, or does the applicant wish to answer that?
Sure. So, they're both Hampton Inn, so I'm sure that the national brand is aware of both developments. However, I'm not privy to the details of the market study. What I do know is that the market study that was conducted for this project had a recommendation of 80 rooms, and that is the basis for granting the franchise agreement to the applicants.
I guess, I guess my thing is that this board is going to have to grant that waiver or not grant it based on how credible that argument may or may not be.
And that was a bit of a comment. So that's an example where, that's okay. We'll let you get away with it. But seriously, let's, let's keep it to questions, and then we can come back again to comments on that. So, let me go to this gentleman there, because I saw your hand.
She's got the mic.
Well, whoever's got the mic, go, go for it.
Hi, Joan Sax in Randolph Center. There have been three, maybe, maybe this is a comment, I don't know. But there are...
I'll let you know.
Three projects in Randolph Center, built in the last five years, that are heavy users of water. And I'm worried about having another heavy user of water in the same area, whether or not they are tied to the Randolph Center water thing.
Yeah, you're definitely in the comment range. Could you phrase that into a question of like, could you explain the water usage and how it relates to the site plan criteria or the natural resources use of the site?
So should I make a comment later then?
Yeah, but I'm going to pick, I'm going to pick up on what you were saying, Sax, and say, could you, could you discuss a little bit about the water? The amount that you need, how it relates to the discharges of the site? Because that's within the purview of the board, as well as how it might affect the natural resources on the site, which are of the board. And maybe in the context of that, you can address some of the concerns that you're likely to hear about here.
Sure, absolutely. So, we are proposing that the development as a whole will be served by an onsite water system, which means we're planning to drill well and install all the needed infrastructure to treat and pressurize and distribute the water to the two buildings in the project. So, as part of that process, there's a permit process with the state where they are reviewing both the source of the water and then the treatment and the distribution of the water. So we're currently working through the source permitting process with the state. We've had a site visit with them, and they're the state hydrogeologists. They've reviewed our general plans for the development of the site, and they've given us approval to drill well. us approval to drill well. Once the well is drilled, we then need to submit to the state a plan to test the well for both quantity and interference with other water sources within a 2,000-foot radius, which is a criteria developed by the state for the particular amount of demand that we are proposing for the hotel, and also water quality, which really goes to protecting the users of the water system. So the applicant is hired a professional hydrogeologist, who will oversee the well drilling, as well as the discharge and interference testing, and that will include monitoring all of the wells within a 2,000-foot radius that we get permission to monitor from the landowners, to ensure that there's not unacceptable interference or too much withdrawal of water from the aquifer. So in order to get our property to give out the water system, we're going to have to ensure that we are not excessively using the water from the local aquifer. There are several wells in the immediate vicinity of the project that are drilled to 200 feet or so and produce over 50 gallons a minute, which is an incredible amount of water for particularly a residential well. Our projected maximum day demand for both the hotel and the conference center is around 26 gallons a minute. So we, given the quantity of water that is typical for shallow, frankly, shallow bedrock wells in the area, we don't expect significant interference, but again, we will be conducting a very thorough test of the aquifer's capacity to ensure that we won't be creating interference with other people's water supplies.
And does that include, if you're not interfering with other people's water supplies, is it fair to say you're also not interfering with the natural resources of the site, the streams and weathered areas, right?
Oh, sure, yes, absolutely, yeah.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Yes, go here.
Mylo Cutler, Randolph Center. So, and I'm...
Hi, Gary.
Mylo Cutler, Randolph Center. So I'm going to quantify this a little bit, because...
Wait, comment or question?
It is a question.
Okay.
Just to preface it, you made the comment that you didn't see semi-truck traffic because you thought the truckers would stop at the parking area on 89. Is that correct?
So hotel guests, not deliveries?
Right, and that's, just from my experience traveling the country, I think if you have a hotel at an exit of an interstate, you're going to get truckers, they need to take showers, they need to eat.
You know what?
So my question is, if you get that semi-truck traffic coming into this hotel as guests, where are they parking? Are you looking at that with the traffic study in terms of entering and exiting?
So in terms of onsite circulation, again, we're not really planning the site to accommodate tractor-trailer drivers coming and parking at the site, so I think if that were going to the hotel, it would be the kind of thing that they would have to call ahead and arrange. Given that there is low demand for the restaurant and conference center use overnight, I think you could accommodate a tractor-trailer parked in one of the more remote parking lots across a number of spaces, but you just have to plan that they would leave early in the morning before the restaurant traffic showed up. I think that's the only way it's going to happen. In terms of the access, this access to the site is completely designed for tractor-trailer traffic, because we expect tractor-trailer deliveries, so just because some of the cars are, some of the vehicles accessing the site are tractor-trailers, they're not going to create any more significant traffic impact than was already contemplated in the traffic study, because both the state road and our access and circulation are designed to accommodate tractor-trailers.
So I'm going to change my method. See, I can learn. I'm going to swear people in, so you can do comments and/or questions, or both, and then I won't have to worry about it, and it'll be on the record, okay? So if you wish to continue, can I swear you in, Mylo?
Sure.
Great. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
Yes.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Another question is, I'm sorry, again, with a restaurant and conference center, and I'm going to guess that you're planning that you'll probably get some lightings there, and in terms of, you know, studies of noise pollution, traffic, when you've got late-night events that, you know, weddings don't really go, you know, midnight or after, and mitigating any of that, because you do have residential areas, including, you know, Gifford Senior Living, so have you looked into that?
We haven't conducted a specific noise study, but the majority of the time, any events that are going to happen on the property are going to be indoors, there will be the occasional outdoor event, but that is located in the portion of the site that's most remote from any other kind of development, so those events are going to be restricted by both local noise ordinances, and as we look at the Act 250 process, they have their own noise standards. So in terms of the operation of the site, certainly we'll be able to plan to abide by all those standards in terms of noise. You know, the traffic impacts, you know, for events, if there's an event that utilizes the entire site, it may be possible that they need to provide some traffic control at the site, but the traffic study is looking at a specific set of agreed-upon conditions in which you analyze traffic, so that you can compare it from project to project fairly. So, you know, we hired a professional traffic engineer to conduct that study, and the conclusion is that there's little to no impact on traffic congestion with the site.
Do you, do we know what this restaurant is? Is this strictly a, is this like a family restaurant? Is this a restaurant bar?
The tenant for the restaurant hasn't been selected yet.
Maybe I could jump in with a question that I had related to that. So a restaurant without a hotel is not allowed in this district. It's allowed as an accessory use to the hotel. Is there any chance that the hotel would be constructed without the restaurant? Or is this a project that is whole?
It's whole.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hilton wants to see a restaurant there.
Very good, thank you. Mylo, back to you, are you done for now?
And one more question. Who's responsible for policing that area? Would that be state police, Orange County Sheriff?
State police and sheriff department.
Thank you. So next question and/or comment. Would you... May I swear you in?
Okay.
Thank you. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Gina Shabat.
Thank you, Gina.
And I have a question pertaining back to the lighting.
Yep, please.
We had a review meeting last month about the aesthetics of the building, what was that board called?
Hold the microphone.
The Design Review Advisory Committee?
Yes, we went to that meeting.
Yes.
And they had mentioned in that meeting about the possibilities of putting motion sensor lights, at least in the back part of the building, to keep down some of the lighting. I did hear that mentioned at the meeting this afternoon, but again, it was a maybe and an if. My question is, is this something you are going to do, and if not, what would stop you from being able to do that?
I think it's the pleasure of the board and the applicant as to whether the board would require that as a condition of the permit, or whether the applicant is willing to commit to providing it. As a representative of the applicant, I can't commit them to it, so that's where we are on that.
Okay, but it was recommended from the other board? I believe it was recommended from the other board?
It's not in the written decision.
That was not in the written decision, but we hear the comment. Gotcha, thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment here?
Sure, Paul.
We really want to ensure the safety of our customers that are coming, that we want people to feel comfortable on the site, that it's a secure site, and one of the ways of doing that is by lighting.
Understood, thank you. By the way, I will come back to the people that I didn't swear in, who I was demanding just do questions. Obviously, we learn from that technique, so I will come back to you with the comments. Other questions and/or comments? Yep.
Can we state if someone's a resident of Randolph or Braintree?
Well, it's a public meeting, they don't need to do that, but if you people wish to, it would be nice, in addition to knowing your name, where you're from.
Clarification?
Yes.
The state statute actually says that parties involved in this discussion have to be Randolph residents, owners of property in Randolph, so.
Thank you.
It would be important to state that they are Randolph residents.
That's my personal lawyer and town manager. Thank you. I did not realize that, so you can learn, see, I've learned two things tonight. Okay, so please state where you're from, and if you're not a resident of Randolph, I think you've got to ask for permission to do that, so go ahead.
Thank you. Larry Ribbit, the Braintree Hill, part of Braintree. And three questions about lighting, and I do thank you for covering most of my concerns. I feel good about what you said. Winter, I saw one picture from the east, you know, you mentioned it was April, but so from my vantage point, so it is possible that I'm going to get, other people from that side might get, actually, anywhere, I might get better views in the winter than they do when there's foliage. Has this been addressed, because I didn't really, I mean, yeah, I mean, especially like the trees in the back of the restaurant, maple, they're practically not to be there in the winter, and that's just one example, so I would ask about what is planned to help save for the lack of foliage.
So all of the views of the restaurant, and all of the views, and the entire view study were taken with no foliage, so what you see in the pictures is what you're going to see when there's no foliage. Additionally... These three trees here are spruce trees, so they provide year-round screening, and then once you get to the north of the spruce tree area, there's some significantly thick, they are deciduous trees, but there's a significantly thick area of chenille that will provide some amount of screening in winter as well.
So the idea of properly baffling the fixtures so that there's nothing hanging over the property boundaries, and that'll cover a lot of that for lighting as well, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, next issue is color of the lights, has that been mentioned?
That has not been mentioned, the lumens have been mentioned, but not the coloration of them. They were going to be LEDs, I understand.
So they're orange.
Okay.
Oh, they're definitely not orange.
Tell us what color do you guys...
Point of information is that the chair had mentioned that if no one ran off president would speak.
And then we got one, yeah, yeah.
I pressed the chair, you know, for time considerations.
Yes, yes, I'm trying to get a sense of how many more people, we're getting, I feel like we're doing pretty well, but how many more people would like to either do comments or questions? I see a few more hands. It's not too bad. All right, let's do, I think that if we can limit people to a couple of minutes at most, and we'll let you do another question, however, since you're not from Randolph, does anyone on the board have an objection to hearing from people who are not from Randolph at the moment?
Why don't we initially, in terms of time, give people from, well, the gentleman had, let's let him finish, and let's turn to Randolph residents and see how we are on time, and if more questions.
Great.
Braintree residents or elsewhere.
Right, I think, okay, I think that makes sense, so go ahead and ask your next question, which will be your last question at the moment.
Just to finish, the current, it's certainly ambletral, like a whitish type of color.
Yes, it's certainly something that is considered by the lighting engineer.
Not going to be sodium-based.
No, 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 they're all LEDs.
Okay, and then one more.
I think you might have...
You brought up the...
Yes, I've heard.
And that there will be a couple of lights that will be visible in front of it. What's wrong with having lower lights along the entrance, that are less visible? Really, all you need to see is the road to get in, even if you don't have your headlights on, so for safety.
Sure, the maximum mounting height for any of the lights inside is 20 feet? That's low for parking lot lighting. It's not going to be like on a telephone pole, they're pretty, you know, when you see a 20-foot-high light, you think, oh, those are low.
Although, how long of the driveway is possible to have this area?
Yeah, well, the problem is that you need a lot more of them, so the higher the light is, the more evenly it distributes light over the area you're trying to light. Can I make a further comment on lighting?
Yeah.
I just wanted to illustrate on this lighting plan...
Yeah, you can all see those numbers from back there, right?
Yeah, it's super easy, right?
If you could zoom a bit further.
Yeah, right.
Oh, well, here, I can, I know how to fix it.
Oh, now we can see the numbers.
So you can see that around the edges of the property, the light is, there's really no spill over, I mean, this is even the edge of the property, this is kind of the edge of the wood line, maybe, between the site and Route 66. So the optics of the light and the placement of the light are really designed so that there is no spill over of light outside of the area that we're intending to light, so you can see then, you know, so if that's a nine-foot parking space, this distance is probably at the most 25 feet outside of the parking lot, or at virtually zero light around the edge of the parking lot.
And those are lumens, Brian?
They're foot candles.
Foot candles, okay, thanks.
Yes, yep, so, and you can see even in this area, the light throws all forward into the site, and there's very little spill over to the back. The optics of these lights are quite good that way nowadays, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to emphasize that though there's a lot of lights, they're all focused on lighting the site, and very little of it is going off of the site, even within our property.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I saw some hands over here before, yeah, let's go, let's go back here. Are you from Randolph?
Yes.
Okay. By the way, if you're, I understand Braintree, Brookfield, things like that, but if you're from Morrisville, you've got to get a life if you're here.
You need this...
Oh, yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Would you state your name, please, for the record?
Tom Ears from Brook Street in Randolph. My question relates to the market study. Is there anything, any data in the market study that demonstrates or sheds light on the ancillary economic benefits to the surrounding community of this project, including the addition to the grant list?
Paul, would you just take that one?
There was an effect on the grant, but...
Nothing specific, thank you, okay. And by the way, the economic...
It's about the viability of the project, and that intent, and Hilton would get behind it, not what the impact would be.
And, you know, so just to be clear, that those are not among the criteria that we consider. Obviously, an important factor, and Act 250 will consider that, some of that for the region, but not here.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I didn't even need to swear you in, however, because you didn't make a comment, you just asked a question.
I'd phrase my comment as a question.
Very good, let's go back.
Thank you. My name is Paul Haynes, I'm the director of Green Mountain Economic Development Corporation. I'm not a resident of Randolph, I'm a resident of Norwich. We own some property, our organization...
Can I still swear you in, though? Because even though you're from Norwich, yeah. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to offer our strong support for this project on behalf of the economic vitality of the town of Randolph, and some of the institutions, including Vermont Technical College, and the business community that we spend a lot of time working with, so I've been familiar with the site for some time. We have considered for some other uses that we did not deem appropriate there. I think the solution that they came up with is quite successful and appealing. I think it's financeable. I think the fact that they have a market flag that will fly there supports those statements, and I commend them for a very sensitive design that I think addresses the concerns that you have, which are very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Other questions or comments? Yes?
Do I have to swear my hands?
I do, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Great, and you notice that in the expedience and interest of time, I'm not asking people to raise their other right hand. And you notice that in the expedience and interest of time, I'm not asking people to raise their other right hand.
Again, the question about... I have a couple of comments. One is about the water use. The state of Vermont has been doing assessments and mapping of aquifers. And I don't know if it's been done for Randolph or not, but it would seem to me that that would be appropriate and asked to have that done because of these other uses that have come on. At some point, particularly with climate change, we are going to have less water. And we do not want to have a situation where either the hotel or any other project here, such as the other ones that are in Randolph Center or the private homes lose their water. So that's something I wanted to make a comment about. The second thing is, I'm wondering why an 80-room or 79-room hotel in Randolph... We do not... The nearest ski resort is 45 minutes in several different directions. Marpelier has hotels and things like that, is much more of an estimation, as does Snow at Stowe and as does around Killington, Brooklyn, and so forth. And I can see a use for this hotel for the VTC graduation, for the New World Festival, and for weddings and so forth. But I don't see that many weddings happening around here. I know that our daughter's wedding was 21 years ago, and we would have had it indoors in this conference room, not outside in a tent if it had been available. So I'm worried about the effect on Randolph businesses, successful Randolph businesses, such as some of our restaurants and tent companies. So that's the second one.
Thank you. I don't know if you... If there's anything there you want to respond to, or if we just go on?
I think we've addressed the water supply issue, and I don't think the economics of the hotel are relevant. I think we're getting more than the zoning.
I'm going to run this meeting the way I wish, so I am going to be very tolerant of people asking questions or making comments. And the zoning board will address the zoning regulations and our decision. But this is an opportunity for people to express whatever it is, and I don't expect them to have read the 200 pages of regulations to make a comment or question. Anyone else? Yes, we'll go to the back. Could you grab a microphone?
I can talk really loud.
That does work.
Okay, great.
Can you raise your right hand?
Yes, sir. My name is Chandler Pollock. I live in Randolph. I'm a resident. I'm a resident. I'm not a property owner.
It's okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
Yes, I do. I wanted to address a comment that I heard that we are going to be receiving less water with climate change misunderstandings in the northeast. That is not true. We're supposed to be getting more water. I'm not sure where it's coming from. Probably the southeast, but my understanding is in the northeast we'll receive more water than less. So I just wanted to speak up on that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the back over there. Yes, sir.
My name is Ken Goss. I live in Randolph.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Thank you, Ken.
It's just a comment in reference to some of these other comments. As far as the need for a hotel. I was a member of a committee, unofficial official committee, about eight or 10 years ago by a group of the businesses here in Randolph to see what we could do about making Randolph better. We did a survey, and I was personally part of that survey. We went as far as the law school in Royalton and of course, VTC, Chandler itself, the hospital, the GW Plastics, and all the businesses on Beanville Road. And we definitely, everybody unanimously said we needed a hotel here for their business acquaintances and things like that. And even local businesses in downtown all agreed that we needed... This was the time when Dell Thompson was trying to build a motel, which is now Gibbards' house building area. He finally gave that up a year and owned and built a restaurant instead, but just my comment.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I think I can speak loud enough. James Larson, I'm in the East Valley and I'm part of Randolph.
Yes, at the moment, yes.
So I'll echo this gentleman's comment.
Wait, wait. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
You see how while I do that, I got that memorized?
So I'll echo this gentleman's comment. I think most of the best homeowners in the town will agree that we sorely need some kind of lodging. Sorely need some kind of lodging. You know, I give the woman here some credit. She's a woman after my own hire. It doesn't take longer than 20 minutes to get to Montgomery. The closest hotel is Berlin, Mount Montgomery. To the north, the closest hotel is Waver. There's value something in between. Snow machine traffic in one time, it's a great idea of mine. That is going to really inject some business to the Dallas trails. It's going to help the businesses of Randolph, the small businesses. We've been needing a hotel for three or four years, ever since the pre-selling approached. We've got enough. One question is, as far as the restaurant goes, is there a chance that a local business?
It would be a preference, yes.
Do you want to look at the restaurant or is it prescribed by Hampton?
That it has to be, that it's not prescribed by Hampton, that it has to be a chain or something like that.
That was another opportunity.
We have to... Someone has to embrace the opportunity, who's a restaurant operator. So that's what we're trying to find. We need it.
Okay, thank you. So just for the record, since this is all on the record, it may interest you to know that the Development Review Board and the zoning regulations do not address a need for a particular project or not. We rely very much on private business and entrepreneurial spirit to determine what's needed and when. So to the extent that this issue is related to items in the town plan, we will be looking at it. But if you tell me, you know, if four people came to propose hotels in various parts of the town, they would all be reviewed by the same zoning rules within the district if they apply, and the need for all those would not be addressed. The same is true for any other business, gas stations, dollar stores, anything else that you might think of. So I just want to... Yeah, I mean, I appreciate hearing the comments about the economic impact and the things that, from a town plan standpoint, you think might be relevant. But the reality is that's not within our purview to decide whether it's needed or not, so. Let me go to the back over here. Yep, go ahead. Yep.
I'm just going to make this quick thing. Nicole of Randolph.
I do swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do. And I'll make it quick because I know the need isn't an issue here. But just after those comments about older surveys that were done on the need issue, our Randolph region re-energized the Economic Development Committee recently redid a study of businesses, or 24 representative businesses in the area. Hotel came up as one of the number-one concerns of what those businesses are responsible for, needed for their future success. And so if I want, if anybody would like to copy that survey, I can provide them a copy. If folks are interested in need or in contact me, I can get that to them.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I don't need no mic.
It's right behind you.
Dwayne Chabot. I don't need a mic. Dwayne Chabot.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. What I'm trying to find out, I understand the business end of it. I'm in the south property, right beside the desert. Nobody likes to see it, but I'm exactly right there looking at the project. My question is, I keep hearing, and I don't know which board I can bring this up to, is we are concerned about everything around it. You know, businesses, economy, the traffic and everything. Is there any rights for the people or any concerns about the people who are actually affected by it right there? Is there anything?
So there is a character, the neighborhood criteria, things like that. And I read a part about lighting and its effect on nearby residential. But the reality is, most of these criteria are based on how the town is affected from public spaces, not private. And traffic certainly is an issue both internal and external, but...
I know when it gets almost clicked all the time to an out there.
If this goes forward, you'll have company, but I think...
Yeah, I hope so.
But I just want to make clear that that's a distinction. Most of our rules are related from a public community standpoint, as opposed to a private person's traffic.
I've been to each one of these boards, and I bring up the question about... You guys coming to us property owners and working with us. And then I hear your rebuttal to one of them, that it's not really your concern because you're concerned about other areas. You're not concerned about the individual property owners around you, or are you concerned with us? Are you willing to work with us? Or is it just a thing to say, yeah, we're going to get with the neighbors and we're going to try to work with them? Or you don't have to? Which one is that?
Do you want to answer for the applicant, Paul?
I did go see your wife, Gina, and I let her know that the balloon's going up to address the issues.
Yeah, that was the second time, this time here, not the time before it was up or the time that you measured.
I don't want to get into it, but that balloon came that Friday morning, and I didn't know about it. And it went up, and it came down that weekend.
I have no problem with balloons. What I'm having a problem with is I, as a property owner, I feel that it would be an obligation of a big place to deal with the property owners there. The other thing is, we have a property line right there in the backside there. What stops the residents that want to walk around in these beautiful fields and see the beautiful tree than coming up my property line and visiting up my place? Is it, do I have to put posted signs? Do I have to load a shotgun or...
Posted gun.
So, yeah. Good question. And as I mentioned, kind of our overall thing is related to... Most of our rules and regulations are related to views and impact from public standpoint. But we always encourage a developer to get with the neighbors and see if they can work out differences. And it is important still for us to hear about your concerns regarding lighting or landscape planning or things that could make... To minimize the impact of this project on your property.
And I agree with the owners that we need a hotel here. I work at Norwich University. I retired from Marine Corps there, training officers. So I believe, and I've been part of this community for 23 years, and I've given a lot to this community. So I think, you know, just a common courtesy to help us along the way, so we know what to do, whether to sell a house, move out of here or what.
Well, as I say, from a board standpoint, we encourage applicants to work with neighbors and to discuss their issues with them and try and accommodate them as best they can in the site plan. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
I've called the Chabots.
Yep.
I have spoken to them.
Okay, good. Sounds like you could do it again.
Did I not call you, Gina, last year? You called about that.
Okay, I'm going to...
I haven't heard anything until this last time.
Okay. Obviously, a communication issue that is an opportunity there or whatever, it would be great, but not relevant necessarily to the board stuff. Any other comments or questions for people? Yes, sir.
I'll try and turn it back to the higher note.
Excellent.
But I do respect all the landowners.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
I do.
Would you state your name, please, for the record?
Isaac Freeman. I'm in Braintree. And I do respect the impala, the impala, the impala landowners. I did hear a little bit of dealing with white infringement and setbacks from property lines. So it seems to me that they're addressing some of the concerns of the area residents. I just wanted to echo what Bob Haynes said about the design. I'm in support of this. I'm on the board. I was on the board of Directors of Prasta, and I'm a paid director of a nonprofit outdoor recreation group here in Randolph in the center of the Montmartre area. And I believe the design of this building fits in with the landscape very well. It's very hidden, and I give them props for that. So I just want to general support. I echo what quite a bit of the prior statements have said about the need for it. I think one thing to think about, too, with this is this hotel will net more people in general to this area that will end up trickling downtown. And so I think there's a lot of excitement about it. They will, so. No, it's even right way downhill. No, that's not it.
Thank you. And then we have stagecoach to bring you back up the hill. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, and then I can just quickly come back. Yes, ma'am? Go ahead. Yep. Please get a microphone. Thank you. Yeah. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so far as it pertains to this application?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please state your name.
Wendell France. Kudos to the work that's been done here today. I think a lot of, I think I was having a crisis today. My concern is the height. You know, when you look at the boom at 50 feet and take away a third of that, to 35 feet, I have some concerns with how high that is. That starts to put the roof line into the foreground visual coming down Route 66. And that's certainly from my property, which was a little bit too beast on that. You know, I have questions about the needs. I drove through Brooklyn to get here today, and it's boarded up in thousands and thousands, and I don't...
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Cynthia Lee Chee.
Secretary of Rendall.
Resident of Randolph. I swear to tell the truth.
You've already been sworn in, really?
Oh, I haven't. That's why.
No? Oh, sorry. Continue to raise your left hand, then. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, right?
I swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth as regards the...
To this application?
These proceedings of this application.
Perfect.
I asked the question before. I'm not sure whether I need to re-ask it to get on the record about the market survey, whether that did or did not include the other 80 four rooms that are going to be coming up on the market soon. As a second comment, in terms of need, it seems as though between the stuff this gentleman was working on 10 or 20 years ago, and Sam Sam has had a building permit out for hotels in the area for, you know, 20 or 30 years or more. So if there was this great need, I think it may have been fulfilled in some sense if the need were really there. I'm not really sure how that's... You know, other people spoken to, it wasn't really my main concern, but that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I address the question about the studies?
Yep.
So the market study did include the proposed hotel, Marpelier. Honestly, with the amount of appeals happening there, it's questionable whether the project will even go forward or not. But regardless, the market study and the reason why we presented the market study to this board is that the market study that was, has already been done and already been completed is sets the requirement for this specific project of the number of rooms that are required to build Hampton in. That is the purpose for talking about the market study, specific to this project. It's already been done, and it requires this project to have 79. The market study was 80, but 79 is a total of 79 rooms.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Myla, one more time. Did I swear you in already?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead. That's right, you were my first.
So in the discussion of whether we need a hotel here, I don't... You know, I think there's definitely a need for a place for people to stay. One of the biggest concerns is it being at the interstate exit versus downtown. We like to go camping down in Bennington, and we happened in to talk to a guy to find out about the renovation of their downtown. Bennington looks a lot like Randolph right now. There's a lot of empty storefronts. Interestingly enough, he got there because there's a hotel built three or four miles outside of the downtown, and he came in to manage it. That hotel is now boarded up and gone. And he said that, yes, people stopped going... And he said that, yes, people stopped going downtown. And so, I think that's something that this town really ought to consider. I have his contact information at home. It seems that, you know, a lot of, this isn't unique to Randolph, but it seems like a lot of towns just don't talk to each other about, you know, what they're doing to revitalize their downtowns. This is happening all over Vermont, and, yeah, everywhere. I'd just hate to see the downtown, you know, closed down more, or something like that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Looking good.
Could I make a comment to that?
Yes, do me.
I'm a 1987 graduate of Randolph Indian High School. I went to college in Wyoming, moved back. I own 22 North Main Street. I've owned it for 22 years. I own the building where the hub is gonna be, that we're fixing up downtown. The last thing I want is for the death of Randolph. I'd move back to improve Randolph. That's why we're doing this. We're all local people. We're not upside developers. We're local people who are trying to fit the need, who spent a lot of money doing it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, yeah, I'm close. So, I want to, first of all, thank you all very much. Are there any other comments or questions from the board that we haven't addressed? Okay, does anyone from the board consider that we need any more information that isn't already on the record here? That we, any reason that we should continue the public hearing? Otherwise, I would take a motion to close the public hearing and move this application to deliberative session.
So, I do want to make just a comment for people that are here tonight and think, is this the first time they're seeing this stuff? And the answer is no. I just want to make sure it's clear that there was a preliminary meeting a month, maybe two months ago, where we saw some preliminary drawings of earlier versions of these, preliminary views of what the building would look like. So, the applicants heard from us then, and we've been thinking about this and asking questions for a couple of months on this. So, we're not blazing through a review of a really significant project. Anyone, anyone think that we are?
So, we have a motion to close the public hearing and move to deliberative session. Do I have a second for that?
One second.
A second, move seconded. No, you can't second your own motion, but I think, I got one and two here, so. Yep, very good. Any further discussion for that? I just, before we do this, I do want to, I want to thank you all. I think this is a great meeting, good hearing. I appreciate people's comments and the ability to constructively discuss this stuff. It makes me feel good about everything about Randolph, and Braintree, and Northfield. And if there was anyone from Morrisville, I'm sorry. But you're all terrific, and thank you very much for the participation, we appreciate it.